So many hours per week in a program that you have also paid for. So our, so it could be, you know, that those two things are kind of intertwined because they're too bad the program makes.
Right. Also part of the logistical challenge, right? Because if some kids need two hours and some kids need four hours, you know, it can really, so that's a complex one that we're keeping close eye on because obviously that could have major implications for our budget and also our facilities. We know that we don't have adequate facilities to really have programs that could support all of them. Any other questions about this one? Okay, so something to just keep your ears and eyes open for. And then there's two other bills regarding career technical education. And so this one here actually, I updated it, but it doesn't look like it updated here. That's actually LR 2731. The LD 1733 has been withdrawn. And then the other one is this LR 2727, which is about membership in career technical education regions and centers. So I don't have a ton of information on those yet. I'm not sure if they're, if they're losing momentum or gaining momentum because they, we don't have LD numbers for those specifically. But we're keeping an eye out for those, knowing that promoting career technical education is a priority of this department, of our current leadership in the Department of Education. A couple others that are carryover bills from last session. And if you look at the MSBA report that Jackie mentioned at our last meeting, I don't know if you've all had a chance to look at that. LD 40 is one that MSA, MSBA supports or plans to re-support. And then the other bill listed there about the general fund bond issue to recapitalize the school revolving renovation fund. That one was also one that was recommend, that the MSBA plans to support. And the last one that you see here, again, is talking about career and technical education. This is one also that MSBA Legislative Committee plans to support. And so I'm just really putting these out here for you to see some of the language and some of the numbers so that as they come up, you can be staying attuned. And then, of course, there's just linking into this document, you can get more detailed information. But then also on the MSBA website, there's a little paragraph about each one, but we're not going to dig into those too deep tonight. Here's a couple of new bills that we're also keeping an eye on. Of course, LD 1666 is about proficiency-based diplomas. And this bill really delays the timeline for the implementation for one year. So if you remember, the current law said that beginning with the class of 2021, which is our current freshman, they would be required to demonstrate proficiency in the four core areas, ELA, math, social studies, and science. And so what this bill is asking for is a delay in that timeline because we still, the rulemaking is still underway for the proficiency-based diplomas. And so just to understand our position as superintendents in Maine, we think that we're doing the right work and that we're on the right path. And so we want to stay the course, but there's some mixed feelings about the delayed implementation of the timeline. So it'll be interesting to watch that and see what happens with that.
That's not the first delay in, like, it, this is a delay in a series of delays. Yes. And couldn't people also get, could some schools say they weren't ready and they could delay, like, not all schools started this year, correct? Did some get a permission to delay?
This was the drop, this is the delay to the delay already.
But then you couldn't get permission to delay even longer?
Delay for their, no.
Okay.
Some are, some were already ready, so to speak. And for previous graduating classes, personally here in Scarborough, we are on track for class of 2021, but we're still figuring some things out too. So we don't think a delay would have a negative effect. We would still continue to do the work that we're doing. But we also think that if we stayed the course, we'll be ready, you know, to issue proficiency-based diplomas as soon as we have the rules from the department about what that looks like. Specifically for, one of the big questions that we have is, you know, what happens with students have IEPs, which are individualized education plans? We believe, and I think we've discussed this in, in previous conversations, but internally we believe that all students should have the opportunity to earn a diploma. And that if they are meeting the goals of their IEPs and they are attending school as they are required and fully participating and engaging in their programs to the best of their abilities, that they should also be, have a chance to earn diplomas. So that's a tangled up one right now, but.
So if they choose to delay another year, does that mean next year's incoming freshmen will still be just the four? Or would they, because remember how we were, it was sort of going to be, the next year was going to be five, four plus one, and then the following year is going to be four plus two. Do we just sort of hang strong at just the core?
So it's, I guess it depends how it gets worked out in committee, if it was, if it does go through, because those, I believe, would be some of the decisions that they would be making. Right.
Julie? I think there are two major problems that are being discussed and the cause for possible delay. One is, as Julie said, special students and the IEP. There are a number of people who don't believe meeting an IMP.
An IEP.
Should, should we, should allow for a diploma? Because that's not proficiency. So that's one controversy. What is proficient? And is, should it be proficiency for all students? Doesn't mean that youngsters with an IEP should not complete high school. That's not the question at all. The question is, do they earn a diploma? That's number one. The second part is students who are doing primarily the technical piece. And, and is there an opportunity for those youngsters to complete their proficiencies in all that they wish to do, both academic and technical, in the allotted time, that the same amount of time that the average student would be able to do it? So those are the two things that, that are concerning communities. There's a side piece here that people in the greater Portland, greater Augusta, greater Bangor areas can get together for training and, and exchange of ideas and help each other out. But when you get to the rural communities who are self-contained, so to speak, they're having difficulty getting their staff trained and training the parents and students as well on what this actually means. So there's a real pushback on this from a lot of people across the state of Maine, not southern Maine. So those are the three items that I heard at my last Maine School Board's meeting concerning this item.
Well, and what's interesting, Jackie, is at the last legislative meeting, superintendent's legislative meeting, it was reported that the Penquess region feels that the delay would, is appropriate because we were not able to provide freshmen with very clear guidelines and expectations due to the lack of rules from the DOE where Aristoc County is not in favor of the delay, of delaying at all. So it's, it's interesting to see. And I think part of it for me is that, like, the benefit of having a deadline is that we'll, we'll keep massaging it and wanting it to be perfect. And if we keep delaying it, delaying it, delaying it until we get it all figured out, then we're never going to actually be doing the work. Where if we take an improvement cycle mindset that we're going to make a plan, we're going to do the work, we're going to study it, we're going to adjust based on what we know is working and not, and we can be flexible in that space while also enhancing opportunities for kids, then we should stick to the, we should stay the course. So there's, I think that's why you have such mixed feelings about it. Because either way, whether we stay the course or we extend a year, the work is the same. We're going to be doing the same work, if that makes sense, from an internal standpoint.
I do have a question about the IEPs. Is there, are they drawing any distinction between the types? Because there's like a 504, which is making reasonable accommodations. And then there's the true educational track ones. Are they saying that anybody who goes into IEP will not get a diploma?
No. No, I think that even, so, true, there, 504 is, a 504 is a civil rights document that ensures that when you have a medical or physical disability, you have equal access. An IEP is, is a federal law. It's a federal mandate, and that ensures that all students have a free and appropriate education, right? And so even you can have an IEP for a specific learning disability. There's like 13 different, you know, categories that one could be classified for and have an IEP. There's a really broad category that's other health impaired. Some are really specific to like hearing impairment or visual impairment. So you could have an IEP for any of those reasons. And you could be very high functioning, very capable and able to being really restricted and needing lots of accommodations and modifications to the actual curriculum. So typically with a 504, you're providing accommodations to create access. Where with an IEP, oftentimes it requires some sort of modification to the program or the curriculum, if that makes sense. But there's still a wide range of, you know, severe needs to minimal just support that is written within an IEP. And that's why it's individualized, because it's based on each individual student. And then within that, and within every IEP, there's goals that are set that are aligned to the standards. But the argument, or I guess the debate, is that if I have a cognitive delay and you, or I have, let's just say, a cognitive delay or impairment, and you know, we know that my IQ is such that I may never be able to be, demonstrate proficiency in, say, like, an algebra two, then what's a diploma look like for me? Right?
But if that's the case now, we wouldn't, those kids are still getting a diploma now. So why, why are we thinking that it's okay to sort of change the rules? I mean, I know we're not. We think that they should have it.
I think the difference is the expectation of proficiency, right? And so it's how are we going to define proficiency? And are we going to define that as meeting specific standards? Or are we going to define proficiency in another way? And so that's, that's where the, there's enough flexibility in the law that gives local decision to define what proficiency means. And so there's a debate also about, well, should that be a local decision or should that be a statewide decision? Should we get to decide which standards students have to demonstrate proficiency in? Or should the state be telling us, you know, here's the non-negotiables for this course or this grade?
It's interesting because you hear all these people talk about, oh, proficiency-based is just, everyone is just going to be low, you know, dumbing it down, all of this stuff. But to me, it sounds much more rigorous than what is actually currently happening.
Absolutely. Done well, that is exactly what the intent is. It makes the instruction much, much more explicit and intentional, transparent to the learner. So no more, our students like guessing, what is it that I need to do? If this is what we're saying, an exemplar looks like, let's give them an example of that so that they can then meet that expectation. But it is much more rigorous.
Can you give an example? I taught physical education for a lot of years. And there were students who came to my physical education class who may have been able to bounce the ball, but they never could have put the ball in the basket. They couldn't run well, but they interacted, they got there, they were on time, they behaved themselves, they passed physical education. If I had to rank them on proficiency in each of the activities that we offered for physical education, and I taught K-12, so it doesn't matter what the grade level is. I had standards, we had standards for each grade level. But there were some children who would never be able to reach the most minimum standard of almost any activity in, in physical education for various reasons. Doesn't mean they shouldn't be given consideration, but you can't say that they are proficient in the activity. And the same thing is, is happening, excuse me, in academics. They do their best. They show up, behave themselves, they interact, but they can never, or probably would never pass the most minimum proficiency test in the activity.
I, yeah, I hear you, but it's fascinating to me that the perception is, is 180 degrees versus reality in this, in that those students passed physical education for showing up. Well, they participated to the best of their ability. But they didn't, they didn't do, they didn't have to perform the same as the average or typical student to get an A.
Correct.
But that's what the IEP is saying. It's.
Correct.
Right. We're already now. You're individualizing the curriculum to their.
Ability.
To their ability. So if they can meet what their proficiency for their IEP is, that, right? Like, that's their, that's their, you know, bar of proficiency. It might not be the same as an average student.
And remember, the big part of this transition to proficiency is also that we're separating out those habits of work. You show up, you're responsible, right? You're respectful. We're separating out those habits of work and we're rating them separately from the knowledge and skills that you're obtaining. And even further than separating out guiding principles, which are those adaptive skills that we all look for in every person we like to interact with and work with and socialize with, right? Those 21st century skills. And so that's a big shift too, because before, every teacher sort of mixed those things up and weighted them whichever way they philosophically and pedagogically believed to be what was best. And so we're also trying to, in this transition, not only make it more rigorous, more intentional, and more explicit, we're also trying to ensure that grades are consistent and accurate and reliable predictors of what students know and can do. Or not predictors, but communications of what kids can know and do. Does that make sense?
But it's, I think it's interesting, I had not heard that at all, the dumbing down.
A lot. I hear it a lot.
In reference to proficiency-based, because that's really opposite of what the intent really is with the law. But what will be interesting, if the towns are allowed to decide, each district decides proficiency, then does that cause families to jump around and say, well, my kid wouldn't be able to make it here, but I could go over to the town next door and I know in that program, they'd get a diploma. So it'll be interesting to see how it all comes down to that.
I haven't heard the dumbing down, but I have heard people saying, well, once you meet the proficiency, what's the motivation for going beyond that? Right. I think that we hear a lot, well, if there's no honor roll and, if there's no number that you're working for, then what are you working for? Right, exactly. Once you got the three, why get a four?
You make the, the average and then you're good enough and why would you try to do?
Why would you stretch?
Right, right. Whereas like if you, a three right now with a 90, maybe you want to, you know, get that 99 and.
Where in the intent behind the transition also is really to ask two questions about every learner, every day, every class. What does Julie know? What is she ready to learn? So if a student comes in knowing, because that happens now, right? Some kids come in knowing. You can have one student who's working really, really hard and not getting a passing grade on the zero to 100 scale. And you could have one student who comes in knowing and doesn't have to put forth very much effort and could have, you know, a 90 or a 100, right? And so that's the other thing that we're trying to balance is really looking at where are you and where do you need to go? So that differentiation of instruction is a huge part of it too. And that's what I think from the implementation side of it is the challenge, because it requires teachers to have a lot of skills in terms of providing interventions daily for every student. And so that's done well, that's also an outcome that we hope to achieve in this transition.
Well, the understanding of the content is going to be different because now sometimes people, if you do your homework, we'll put it in, you know, 100 points because you did that. So you could have a grade that's really kind of inflated in some ways that is not really measuring what you know because of that 100 being added in. So there will be habits of work and the proficiency law.
What happens, sorry, this is just like probably a question just for our district or maybe kind of, maybe not. But what happens when you have somebody who is incredibly proficient and has horrible howls?
Horrible what?
Habits of work and learning. They still graduate?
They still graduate, like saying we haven't taught them those skills, but...
Well, the goal is that, well, that's a really great question actually, right? Philosophically to think about. If I don't, I think it'd be hard to see a student who's not responsible, not respectful, not ready to learn, and also achieving really high levels of proficiency.
Right.
And if that's the case, then we have to ask ourselves if they can do all, is it rigorous enough? Maybe we need to make some accommodations for Julie, provide some intervention to provide enrichment for her if she can do all these things and not be demonstrating these positive habits of work and learning. And so that's a teachable moment, right? That's an opportunity for teachers to intervene and really provide that support. It's not something where we would be like, oh, your grades are good, or you're, you're demonstrating proficiency in these areas, so we're not going to worry about that. We're just going to then provide intervention that's specific to helping the student demonstrate those skills or learn those skills if they don't yet have them. But there could be cases where that happens, right?
But the diploma is based on their proficiency, not their character.
Um, we are, we are not required by law currently to provide grades for habits of work and learning. We're providing marks to students as a form of feedback and communication, but we are required, the guiding principles and the, the content ratings are, are part of the law. So those are, those are the two that will be required to be reporting out on. And you have to demonstrate proficiency in both the content standards and the guiding principles to obtain proficiency, a proficiency-based diploma. So you can be proficient in a class, but you would have, you still have to demonstrate proficiency. And the idea is that by making learning less about sitting in a seat and getting X number of hours in the classroom, by making it more about educational learning experiences, that could look really different. So a huge part of the law is not just the shift to proficiency, but it's also then, what are the different pathways and different opportunities for students to demonstrate that proficiency? So it really moves away from this sort of one-size-fits-all traditional measure of success, if that makes sense.
Also, I think you can imagine that if these kinds of discussions are held in different, all the different towns, you can begin to think about, even teachers come from different programs, different philosophies about pedagogy and different ways in which they handle their class and how they score their kids. And so then you need all this time to have these huge discussions in order to arrive at...
Yeah. And part of it is, we have to just start doing it, right? And so we've learned a lot from the beginning of the year till now. And there are some things that we thought were going to be the best way to do things, but now we're at the ending, the end of the second semester and we've learned, we've learned a lot. And what some folks are ready to hear in September, others are going to be more ready to hear in February. And that's just how learning goes, right? With adult learners or student learners. So really for this, the only thing that this is proposing is that delay for one year. And, you know, you could take sort of a neither for or against, I kind of feel neither for or against it, because I know our work is going to be the same regardless, but boy, it sure would be great to have clear rules from the DOE on what this means, because then I think it allows us to start creating more clarity for folks, for all stakeholders.
I think we would be hard pressed in a court of law to deny a diploma if a student demonstrates proficiency in the, in the coursework.
Hmm, right. So would this still have significant benefits to other districts that aren't us?
Everyone had to have it, so this is the...
This is the drop...
Drop, you know, that you had to have, started.
So they should have, okay.
I mean, there's other districts who started four years ago. We took the delay.
Right.
And some districts took the delay because they just thought like, oh, this is so complex. Like this is going to go away, honestly. And so it's kind of like at the point now where it's like, ooh.
There are still people who think it's going to go away.
There is. So that's that one to just kind of watch. It's interesting to see what, what will come from this Department of Ed in the meantime. This one here, LD 1710, is the Act to Restore Maine School-Based Healthcare, Health Centers. This doesn't impact Scarborough directly, but it's something that we certainly support for some students in some districts, such as Portland, it's the only healthcare that they have access to. And so I think this is a definite, in my mind, I don't know what your opinions are, something that should be restored.
Do they eliminate the funding 100% Julie?
I believe so.
I think they did.
We believe so.
I'm sorry, can you hear you?
I'm sorry, Jackie, I asked if they eliminated that funding 100% from the state and the answer was, was doubled that, for the, the school-based clinics?
Yes, I think the, at the last days of the budget, all, all the funding went.
Yeah.
Any other questions about that one? This is an interesting one. LD 1689 is the Act to Repeal Certain Provisions Regarding the System Administration Allocation Affecting Maine School Districts in the Biennial Budget. So if you remember, I've talked to you a couple of times about the regional service centers. And so what this is actually, basically when we were first, when we first learned about the regional service centers and the application process, we were told one number and then the number has been changed. And so now, I think it was like $200 per student and now it's like $46 per student in year one and $94 per student in year two. And I think part of the challenge with this is that the Department of Education is calling it an incentive, but in essence, it's also a penalty, because if you don't apply, you don't get that funding in your system administration. And so again, it feels a little unfair that the rules are changing in the middle of the game. And so we currently applied for two regional service center applications and we're looking to combine and consolidate that into one at the end of this month, as we consider applying for the second phase of the application, which is due in April. So this is, there's actually a public hearing on this next week, and the public hearing starts at 1:00 and the other one we're going to talk about is also next week. So again, I think what's hard about this one for me, as I'm still kind of learning how things work here in Maine, is that we already share services with Cape Elizabeth. We share a food service director. We're already a part of a food service, a co-op for purchasing food service produce. We already share services with our towns. We already share services with the Saffago Education Alliance in terms of professional development, recruitment strategies and a number of other things. And so for me, this just is counter to everything we know about motivation and it makes it about compliance and people jumping through hoops, not to mention the amount of time and resources it takes for you to really create these inter-local agreements on such a mass scale. I was talking with a superintendent today who's in a, who applied for a different application and he said he spent probably 10 hours of his own time plus legal fees in trying to just create an interlocal, an inter-local agreement for their application. And so again, the goal here, the department's intentions are good. They want us to be as efficient as possible so more money can go directly into the classroom. And it's just kind of an insult because that's our job to begin with. I, really, that's my opinion about it. So that's another one to keep an eye on and see what's happening. Any questions about this one?
Do you have any sense on like why they changed it? Why, is it why they want to change it?
They don't have the money.
No, but not enough money.
Just enough money.
So 19, I believe 19 applications were submitted. And so part of the messaging is that there's, there's this great interest. So if they were to repeal the, the provisions that, you know, it would be discouraging to the districts, but in fact, we all applied because if we didn't, it was going to negatively, negatively impact our students in the fact that we would get less state subsidy. So I think it's just an, an interpretation of what we had to do in order to ensure that we're maximizing the formula for each of our districts versus what, how they're interpreting. And remember, it's all coming from the same pie, if you will. There's no more money being added to the budget. And so the more districts that apply that are getting the $46 per kid, per student, the less money that's going to run through the formula. And so it's just, you know, trying to take a pie and say there's enough for, right? My pie analogy. Okay. Any other questions about that one? No? All right. The other new bill is LD 1761, and this is an act regarding the prohibition of the possession of a firearm on school property. And this is the one that I thought we could spend some time really talking about today and maybe developing our position on this. So what this basically allows is for a parent, let's say hypothetically, to be dropping their child off from school and having like a gun rack in their vehicle. So currently firearms are not allowed on school property, but this would allow them to have it in their possession, in their vehicle. Or a staff member for that matter, or anyone else who's on school grounds. And so I thought this would be a good one for us to talk about and sort of debate and get your thoughts about it.
So when I read this one, it was that it needed to be locked in the car and, now basically, do you have the details on this?
Yeah, I had it on a different slide.
So at the present time...
Here it is.
The prohibition is you can't bring a gun on school property.
Right.
No matter what.
Right, exactly.
And, and John Martin introduced this, I believe, because there are, again, more rural communities, you know, especially even students, you know, have, have guns in their cars. But the incentive for this bill is this, that if a parent is called to pick up their child, let's say their child is ill or whatever it happens to be, and the father has to come from work, but he went hunting before he went to work and he's got the gun, he doesn't, can't go home and drop the gun before he goes to pick up the child. That's just a little synopsis.
So just to add to the detail I misspoke earlier, it does say specifically that it would allow the person to possess it as long as the person is dropping off or picking up and remains in the car. And that the gun is not loaded and it is in a locked container or a locked firearms rack. So you couldn't be a student and park your car in the parking lot with a weapon in your vehicle. And you couldn't be a staff member doing the same. This says you would have to stay in the car, which poses issues for picking up and dropping off. Depending on the age of your child, we don't just send them out to their parents either, so.
It's like this one would be hard to, as, as it stated there, it would be hard to say for sure that doesn't happen...
Already.
Already. Because it's such a controlled situation.
Right.
No one is going to the person's car...
Right.
To see if they have anything in the car before they're allowed to out.
Well, most people can't pick up their kid without coming into the school most of the time. You can't get your kid out in the lot unless it's after school and you've told your kid and you're out there waiting. In other words, you can't pick up your kid early before school gets out without coming in the, in. So if there was another person in the car, I suppose, I mean, it's all, how do you manage this? If it went through, how would you manage it?
Well, that, that was a major discussion at, at the Maine School Board's Legislative Committee, that most parents would have to leave the car...
Right.
...to pick up the child. Or to take the child to school in some instances. And the majority of people on our committee are opposed. There are members of the Board of Directors, not the Legislative Committee, but the Board of Directors, who, who think this is okay. And it depends on the community from where they come. It's common in those communities. So I said to one man who was, who was in favor of this, I said, well, why can't you just take the gun out of the rack and put it behind your seat? I mean, you're not supposed to have it there, but at least it's not visible, you know? He said, well, then you'd be lying. I said, oh my God. You want to pick up your child or you're...
It'd be locked. Rather have it locked than behind somebody's seat.
So has there been a...
From what you can understand, has there been an issue with a parent going there with a gun rack and then, like, you know, has someone...
Kind of what I was wondering.
Have an asset into a legal situation because?
Have an asset in northern Maine.
I'm not aware. My understanding is that there was a similar bill that was proposed last year and it was defeated, but I don't know of any specific incident. I don't know if anyone else has heard of a specific incident.
Seems like they're legislating for something that's not like an issue. Well, minute possibility.
It's also contrary to the state law, we're an open carry state. Especially in the rural communities, I'm just questioning how they can, how can they have this in there? Somebody could have a sidearm, not a gun rack gun, but, you know, pistol or something along the way.
Not on school grounds. So the, the difference is that right now, you are not allowed to have a firearm on school property.
Period. But that trumps, that trumps the law, that...
That trumps state law?
And so, right, just like you're not allowed to smoke on school grounds, right? You could think of it in that same way. You can smoke all you want everywhere, you know, at home and wherever, but at, on school property. And so my, my personal standpoint on this is that schools are sacred places. Our number one job is to ensure that students are safe. We have a big job of making sure that 2,925 students are safe every day, 29 students are safe every day when they come to us, while they're with us, until they get home. And this just, there's a difference between you doing it and us not knowing about it and us saying it's allowable for me. I just feel like there's a bright line there. But that's my personal...
So who's held responsible if something, if this passed and a parent came and picked up their kid and had to go into the school, sign their child out, and somebody else tried to find this, oh, Mr. Smith just left his car with the gun in the gun rack. Who's responsible, Mr. Smith or the Scarborough School Department?
It doesn't, I don't have that level of detail at this point, but the, this is the reason why they have public hearing is because they want people to come and say these things or propose these scenarios in testimony. And so there is a public hearing next Wednesday, and I put the details there for you. The Education Committee will address this and we'll hear testimony. And so we could choose to, I don't know folks' availability, you could choose to go and testify in person. You could, we could decide as a school board if we have a certain position that we want to send a written testimony and ask for it to be read by one of our legislators. Or you could choose not to have a position on this at all, but I just thought that this was a timely issue that we might have opinions on and thought we could utilize our workshop today to sort of unpack that a little.
Maine School Boards is opposed to it, I believe.
Yes, yes.
They're opposed to this bill?
Yes. As are the superintendents, Maine Superintendent's Association.
Well, is there anyone here on the board that thinks that they might be able to support that?
I can understand what Jackie's saying about different areas of the state. I have lots of family in central Maine who are hunting enthusiasts and also really great parents of school-aged kids, and I can very well imagine this situation happening for them. And for them, I would say, fine, you know? I'm not in favor of having guns on school property in general, but I can understand how in different areas of the state it's harder. I mean, well, I should, I have a neighbor here who goes and hunts, you know, on the marsh sometimes before it starts. And he's also a police officer. I'm sure he's very responsible.
Just an asset of law enforcement and may not drop children off them.
So on one hand, if, I'd much rather have it be in a locked case or a locked gun rack rather than saying just hide it under your seat, you know, like, so...
That's a good question.
But I'm also not, in, on principle, I don't want guns on school property. So I, I don't know... So, I don't know, I'm really, I'm a little ambivalent on it, actually.
So why don't we take a few minutes? I just put these two bullets up here, and I have some scratch paper, if you want to start to sketch out some of your ideas or your thoughts. Just what are some questions to consider, because you're bringing up some really good points? And are there, you know, do you have strong beliefs that you also are thinking about in relation to this bill in particular?
From the firearms on school property?
School resource officer.
Is it just any police officer, or just the school resource officer?
Well, I think it would matter if they're on or off duty.
Right.
But our school resource officers are able to carry weapons.
I'm just telling you about this bill, Julie.
Yeah, just this one. Unless there's another one that you're thinking, you know, you're having passion about, you could also jot some thoughts about that.
Is there federal law, like prohibiting any of this?
Guns on school property?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
So it's just like going around that somehow? Like, what's the federal law currently?
I'm not sure, that's a good question.
I don't, you know, I mean, there may have been laws at some point, but they might have been overturned by law.
By what?
By the U.S. Department of Defense. I don't know. On school property.
Right.
Good thought. Cut off. Yeah, it does look like there was federal law, Gun Free School Zone Act, from 1990.
Well, a perfect example would be medical marijuana, right? So legalized in Maine, but not federally legalized. And that creates complications for us in terms of policy and implementation, right? So that's an example of where you have a federal law that says it's not legal, and then you have a state law that says it is.
Okay.
So give us like five minutes, and sort of jot some thoughts. And you can talk to people around you, it doesn't have to be completely quiet.
I'll tell you too, that it is much more powerful when board members speak than when superintendents speak. I mean, superintendents represent schools, but we are the elected officials, and legislators are more moved by speaking with elected officials as opposed to employees.
Do we know when that law, Gun Free Zone, school homes came, oh, 1990? Because kids in Scarborough used to hunt before school, Joanne, and drive school with their guns in their trucks. I thought it was like hallucinating. I did not, I'm not a gun person, but I have family that has lived here a very long time, and that, we were rural Maine. This in Scarborough was that town. And so, I don't know, it's just, it's, I don't have a strong opinion either way. I'm not a gun person, I don't think guns should be on school property, but I think this would be a nightmare to try to regulate.
Well, how is it regulated now?
So that would be a question that we would want to consider, right? How will we monitor compliance of this proposal? So, if we're saying that it's allowable, but you have to be in your vehicle, you can't, it's only for pickup and drop-off, like, how are we going to monitor that? That is a big question that I have.
But how is it monitored now?
Well, number one-
Well, it's monitored in that if you see something, you say something, right?
The assumption is that there are guns.
You do have it behind your seat.
There might be.
Nobody's gonna-
I think it's scarier to think about that, I think it's scarier to think about having a gun in a car than a locked gun in a car. I'd rather have no guns in the car, however.
But if an accident happened, like say that the parent had this, you know, if an accident happened in the car, on school property, how does that, like, how is that liability?
I don't know.
But to me, that's another thing that-
Well, technically, that would still be against this law, because it has to be unloaded, locked, and you have to remain in your vehicle. So if any of those three things aren't adhered to, it's still going to be against your-
Yeah. But to me, like, to me, the biggest thing is there is no way to, I don't believe in guns, I wouldn't want guns anywhere on school property, but the feasibility part of it, I don't see how you can, like, if you're picking up your child, like we said, in the middle of the day, there is no way you can stay in your car and go pick up your child unless, you know, you have someone with you. But, it doesn't seem like you'd be able to do that.
Just saying, no guns, like, can't that just be enough?
Well, that is the current law, right? No guns on school property. This would allow for, this would be us crossing that bright line and saying, "You can have guns on school property if you do these things." And we believe, I believe strongly, that it is just, our job is to keep schools as safe as possible. And we know that tragedies involving guns on school property are not unimaginable, it's happened. And so, how can we, in light of that, and I feel the same way about medical marijuana, when we're in the midst of an opioid crisis, how can we legalize marijuana? But, you know, I just don't see how those two messages coexist, us saying that we're going to make schools as safe as possible, and then us saying, "In some situations, you can do these things." Because we know that whenever you, it just opens up the door for that law.
Right, it starts the slope.
Right. And then it is, it's a whole nother thing to manage. So, when somebody does pull up, and then they come in to get their child, and there's clearly, you know, a gun in a gun rack that we can see, and it's visible, what happens then? Who enforces that?
Who's the person that has to say, "Your son can't go home with you today." You can't come in.
Well, I don't think that would happen. What I think would happen is that somebody would involve law enforcement. And I think a parent would say, "Arrest me, I'm here to pick up my child."
But who intervenes at that point while the law enforcement is coming? Would you ask a teacher or administrator to restrain somebody until the police came?
No, I'd have to report it.
Yeah.
Like enforcement, that creates a nightmare. How they should-
And was this, would this be here? Was this put forth by, like, the NRA or anyone associated with that?
No, this is John Martin from Eagle Lake.
Eagle Lake.
Who's been in the legislature longer than I've been on the school.
Yeah, in light of the slippery slope argument, I can see John saying, "Let's not cross that line," for sure.
But to me, it's like, you go, okay, you get this, and then it's like, okay.
Right, then two years from now, there's the next one.
Yeah, there's another law that, okay, it's okay to have guns in school if you are, you know, I just think that that's, to me, where it would head next.
I think, I guess, in light of, like, discussing the fact that we don't really have any enforcement now, or, I mean, you know, like, other than if you see something, you say something, I mean, there's no, like, policy or-
There's law that says you can't do it.
Right, but there's, we don't have people checking, do we?
When you see it, you know.
Right.
Right. So, but I guess my point is that there's no way to monitor this either, really, without changing the way we do things, so why don't we just, I guess my opinion is to leave it with just no guns on school property.
Yeah.
I think if you really are that, like, really are, like, pulled away from hunting, then I'd rather have you spend the extra 20 minutes going home and dropping it off, and then coming to get your kid, where they're safe in the nurse's office, than just rushing to school with, like, your weapon still on, you know, like, I just, I feel like it is such a small minority, like, I can't-
Drop your gun at the police station, then come get your kid, and go back to the police station.
And then I just go back to, like, you know, when we were kids, our parents did not have cell phones, so if your parents were out shopping when you were sick, you just waited in the nurse's office, and that was okay, you know? You know what I mean? You waited for an hour in the nurse's office, because they couldn't reach them, you know what I mean? And that's, it takes them a longer, you gotta drop off your gun, you know?
So, I guess, you know, I think for this board, it's, can we arrive at an agreement tonight where we could make a statement on this possible bill that's in the legislature? Or do we feel like, I mean, you can, we can individually, you can individually contact legislators, you know, our legislators in Scarborough, we don't have to make a joint statement, so it's a question of whether or not we all would even want to make that agreed-upon statement, and then what the wording would be. So, personally, I, I mean, since I haven't said anything about it, I'm just against guns, period. I'm against guns in terms of the laws in this current state about carrying guns as well. I just don't think there should be guns available. And when I looked at the research, this is a few years ago, for schools, it was like, if you have a gun in your home, it's like twice as likely that someone in your home will be accidentally shot with that gun. Does anybody know anything different than that?
I know you're obvious.
It's like significantly possible-
Well, we had a tragedy right here in Scarborough, just recently.
That's right.
Wasn't one of our school-aged children, but it was a school-aged child, and it happened in a home in Scarborough, they had a weapon in the house, and accidentally, because it's never on, well, it's not usually on purpose, the child lost their life.
I think the board should take a position against this bill.
Well, I think only if we're all in agreement. I wouldn't want to take a position if not every member felt the same.
And is there a reason why we're choosing this bill? Like, is it just-
The reason why I offered this is just the timeliness of the public hearing coming this next Wednesday. I would encourage you to do this type of work frequently. As Jackie said, your voice is really powerful, and there's big decisions that are being discussed, or big bills that are being discussed, not just this year, but every year. But I think that's part of our job as school boards, is to advocate for what we think is best for our students, and, you know, advocating at the state level is one of the best, or one of the most, the largest impacts you can have on some of the mandates and decisions that get handed down to us, that then, of course, impact all of our students.
So, what I'm hearing is, from Jackie, you'd like to see the board take a position, from Hillary, you probably would not want to see that happen unless all of us came to some agreement.
I think if all of us are in agreement, I would be comfortable having the board take a position, but if we're not, then I'm not as comfortable, if somebody disagrees, then, and then the board's decision, you know, you have to, you end up having to support something you might-
Right, you want it to be able to say, "The Scarborough School Board."
I'm fine with opposing it, I'm fine with that, too.
I feel like, before deciding that we're all in agreement, we should have a specific, like, statement that we would have in mind, that we would be agreeing upon, before saying that we're in agreement on it, that's how I think about it.
I think that that would be a good next step, but I want to have a sense, before we even spend time writing it, I want to have a sense that-
Well, even just like a simple statement.
Yes.
That's it.
Well, I think it's-
Simply opposed by the bill as a whole, or the wording, or by something as simple as that, just to make it clear.
Yeah, and then I think the language can be tweaked, to make sure everyone's comfortable if we decide to do it.
I definitely oppose it strongly, because I just think our job is to keep kids safe, and that just goes against it completely.
The law stands as the law stands. And I'm fine with, I'm fine in either direction. I think that opening it up, yes, is a huge slope, that you never know what's going to come next. I think my bigger question is, how are we, how is that law being enforced?
Right.
And how would this one be enforced?
So, at this point, we're talking about, we don't know how it would be enforced, so we're talking about where each one of us feels in the ability to support a statement, a simple statement that is against this, LD-1761. And so, I was-
I'm comfortable opposing it, I think in light of the difficulty of monitoring, the slippery slope argument about what might come next, and, like you were saying, Dawn of a statistical likelihood of accidents where there's a presence, I would be happy to oppose it.
And it's perfectly appropriate for you to have a position, to say you oppose it because, and then have these questions that are unanswered by the current language. That's definitely something that I've observed, I'm sure Jackie's observed that in people's testimonies.
So I think, I think I'm hearing that this board could support a statement around this to basically keep the law as it is, and not make this addition to opening up the possibility of guns in cars. Is that what you heard?
The question, however, would have to be to either support or oppose the bill.
The bill, yeah. And, so, you're not saying, "Support the federal law," you're saying, "We either support LD-1761, or we oppose LD-1761 because of the following." And it could be, you know, for me, it would be, "How will we monitor and comply to this I can imagine situations where a gun, a car, a gun may be left in a car and it's unattended. What are the implications of that? You know, simple, for this example right here, talking about pickup and drop-off, well, guess 95% of the time, with the exception of maybe some high school students, the parents are getting out of the car. So, it almost creates an illusion of some sort of added right, but the reality is that it just puts then, I think, our parents in a situation where, "I'm allowed to do this, but then I also need to go in and get my child, and so now I have this, like, ethical dilemma."
There's no way you could actually take them away.
Right.
So do we want to just compose a statement here? I mean, it looks to me like it'd be pretty easy to compose a statement, because we're just speaking to that bill. The Scarborough Board of Education opposes the implementation of LD-1761 based on the following concerns, blah, 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 we just speak to those specific things.
I can type it like that.
You can type it, okay. So, it would just be the Scarborough Board of Education opposes LD-1761, guns on school property.
Since the Gun Free Zone Act, it looks like the current law basically-
1761.
This one allows them in cars, in racks. So this is-
And then I would put, "We are concerned about the following."
Just say the following reasons.
Oh, yeah, we are, yeah, okay, for the following reasons. Number one, student safety is our number one-
I know my cousin's next for Maine.
Goal? For all students? Your number one priority, yeah?
I don't think you need to put the second sentence.
The student safety is our number one priority?
Period.
Allowing guns on school property? Which one do you mean, Jackie?
No, I think guns- But this is- We say, "Student safety is our number one priority, period."
All right. And go to the next statement?
Inability to monitor, or to, however you want to say it.
Concerns about-
Yeah? Compliance?
Well, we can't enforce the compliance anyway, it would have to be, it would have to be law enforcement.
Judge, can I ask a little side? In our school district, the parents must come in the building, leaving the gun unattended.
Which would leave the gun unattended, yes.
Mm-hmm. Be quiet. the gun unattended."
Which would leave the gun unattended, yes.
Mm-hmm. We would have no ability to identify whether the gun is loaded and locked or not.
That'll all under kind of monitoring and enforcing compliance, right?
We talked about that we have concerns that if this is passed, then other laws, like the flip-flop idea, do we want to put something about that or not?
The more concise you can be when you're dealing with the legislature, the better off you are.
Think something just about simplicity of the simple rule-
Absolutely, just hit the high points.
Guns are not allowed on school property. Is that going to be the easiest to communicate to parents? Whereas this allows gray area and confusion.
We could say we're concerned with the ambivalence this may create.
I prefer the simplicity of the no.
Or challenge with that.
A instead of O.
Promise, don't judge.
No, I know, I'm laughing because I do the same thing. I am similarly flexible, Scotty.
Can we change? Do our high school kids, during school hours, if a parent is here to pick them up, do our high school kids, are they allowed to walk out of the building without the parent coming in?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you have a note, if they have a note.
If they had a note.
That's why I said often required.
Yeah, but I was thinking of almost always, or nearly always.
Parents could call in and then they can't even meet them up.
Not for drop-offs always, right? So the-
Right, even at the middle school, it's just, it's like if I drop my daughter off late after a doctor's appointment, she can just go in.
So how about, are usually required?
Um.
You know what? I would say in Scarborough-
It is often required.
Parents are required.
Primary level, and it's always required. Even if you pick your middle school to enough spec to pick her up, I need to go in. Yeah, in middle school, you have to-
It's only the high school that you-
It's the high school.
How about, for many, for many school levels, it's required to-
Parents are often required. I don't see why it's-
Yeah, at most of our school levels.
It leaves something.
How about that?
Yeah, that's better. Are you, am I like, are we editing this for real? Because it should say, "School district would have difficulty-"
Monitoring.
Monitoring and enforcing compliance.
Bullet number two.
Yeah.
It's just word two.
Can take out the word two.
Kelly, look this over, right, Kelly? You'll look this over.
I remove two, before, after difficulty.
Difficulties, monitoring.
It's like me on Google Docs, it's up to first.
Monitoring.
Make sure everyone's engaged.
We can enforce, enforcing compliance is not our job. There's no way we can enforce compliance on a law unless it has directly to do with dealing with students. So-
Well, are we responsible for monitoring it now as it stands? Have no guns on-
The monitoring piece is fine, the enforcing piece-
That's up to the State Department. Okay, then just take out enforcing compliance. Monitoring this law as written.
I think that's fine, like, we don't have to have a gazillion-
Jesus. I agree, I think that's fine.
I just think that, I might add something, and maybe it's summed up in student safety is our number one priority, but adding something to say that, you know, having guns on school grounds increases the likelihood of accidents.
Yeah, I- Could we add, like, student safety is our number one priority, we believe any weapon on school grounds is contrary to this?
Well, our SROs have weapons, so-
Civilian weaponry.
We don't want to get too much up there.
How about this, current specification of guns on school property makes tragedy less likely to happen.
Yeah, nothing wrong with that.
Yeah.
That's a good word.
Instead of student safety, or after? You can't end with nothing. You can't end with happening, if I have to-
To occur.
Didn't it say to occur?
To occur.
To occur. You can end with occur.
Okay, so Donna had access to this, I've shared it already with her, so this slide is in, right in this presentation, along with the other notes that I've included about these details, and I can share it out with everybody else as well, if you want to look at it over the next couple of days. But I would suggest that if we hope to have, does anyone think that they'll go to Augusta next week, Monday?
What day is it?
It's Wednesday, the 24th, at 1:00. Or if not, if we would like to have it read, you can have it read, or you can just submit written testimony, either way.
If you want to go get, we'll get you in touch with main school management, and they'll take care of it for you.
What's the timing of it? Like, would I be back for middle school pickup?
No, I'd be, yeah, it could be, I'll be back.
I'll be down.
They have only the owner of the thing they're there.
But Senator Volks said she would read it for us.
Yep, and also Rebecca Mallett is on the education committee, so we can also provide it for her as well.
Yeah, I think we take Senator Volks up on her offer if she's willing, and she's going to be there anyway.
Okay.
Unless she's in another hearing.
Yeah, we'll check with her.
So we're just, do you want to put it on the school board letterhead and then sign and date it, and then we'll send it out?
Send the copy to main school management.
Okay.
Great.
So who up there, Jackie, and particular person?
Either Steve or Vicky.
Steve Bailey?
Steve Bailey or Vicky Vol.
Because I imagine that Senator Mallett cannot read it from, or she's on the committee side.
So I also included in this slide deck who all of our representatives are, so that way you have their email addresses. So it's as you're staying up to speed on all of these bills that we shared tonight, plus there's more. I only highlighted a few to keep a watchful eye on. There's many more, and as I look at the list, it changes. There's a link to that in here. But then this way, if you wanted to contact them directly, or work with Donna, or the communications committee to share other positions, that, I think that's a healthy practice for us, as I said earlier. But that's here in the slide, so it's all in one link for you.
Well, I just had a question, because I know as a board, we tend to, you know, we do work as a group, so if we wrote a letter, like an individual letter, that would be from us personally, or would we say we're a school board? You know, that's what I just wondered, because normally, we, you know, we always work as a group. So how does that-
I think you, could you say, like, parent of Scarborough student, board of education member, couldn't you say in terms of-
I'm just asking, it's just because I didn't want to, if I said something that-
You could say you're a Scarborough resident and you also serve on the Scarborough School Board.
Support the board's position. No, but if I was like, say I wanted to talk about one of the other, say some other things.
It's like you're saying what your job is. You're not speaking for the board.
Different than this, what you're saying, you're sending a collective, the Scarborough Board of Education.
No, I'm saying, like, if on another topic, I am sending a letter, just me.
Yep.
I just, so I can say that I also serve on the board.
Anytime I have addressed a committee up there, it's always been the board's representative presenting the board's opinion.
But you're, but you are a representative.
Correct. But anybody who wishes to testify can testify on behalf of the board's position.
But she's asking if she can just email not representing the board.
But she can testify as an individual and say she is a member of the-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Just because you're sitting here doesn't take away your individual rights to-
Yep. Any other questions about that? So again, when you get this document where it says new bills, you'll see that it's underlined, that's a link that takes you right to the main school management site, and you can, they organize it really nicely so that there's like the bill, the title, and then a little blurb about it. It's a good way to stay informed. So the other thing we had on the agenda tonight-
Is for FY '19 school budget communication strategy.
I'm just noticing the time, we spent a little bit more time than what we had planned on that first topic, but I think it was a good process for us to go through. What I was thinking with this is, we obviously have a very active communications subcommittee who does a lot of work around the budget. And Jody recently shared with all of us, I think he shared it with everybody, or maybe it was just communication.
I don't know what you mean, Scott.
The webinar around using stories and telling stories as a form of communication to get your message out. And it's something that we've talked a lot about, and maybe this isn't for tonight, but one of my wishes, or dreams, if you will, is to create a communication library that houses, like, what are the key points, like, what are the stories we're going to tell? Not just about the budget, but in general. For example, today, when we were at the main superintendent's conference, winter conference, there was a superintendent from Oregon speaking, and he was talking about, you know, their graduation rates. And like, for them, they really emphasize their graduation rates and their attendance rates as they're looking at instructional equity for all students. And they look less at their state test, which is smarter balance. So the messages that they're sending are like around the fact that X percentage of their ninth graders are on track for graduation, or X percentage of, you know, the opportunity gaps that they're closing in terms of graduation rates, or access to higher education, or to career technical education. And so I just, I, it would be helpful for me, because I said this, I feel like I said this all last year, everybody wants like the one pager, and I'm just like, your one pager is different than your one pager, is different than what Dylan wants on his one pager. But if we had, if I knew certain data points that you want, we wanted to be able to communicate, we could do the background work, we could create the visual for it, and then we could talk about, is this a social media communication? Is this something we would like to have published in the leader? Is this something we want to just have in our budget book? So I don't know if there's things that you're already thinking about in terms of what those key communications might be, and maybe if we just brainstorm that a little bit, then we can bring back some examples of what it might look like to another meeting.
So Julie, sorry, just to clarify, are you saying you want to have, you want to have ready, like, a story or something to talk about for the most, I don't know, frequently requested data points?
Yeah.
So that you can, when somebody asks you, you'll be able to like-
Not just when somebody asks us, but so that we are controlling the headline, if you will, and so that we're telling, we're sharing the information in a way that's easy to understand, that matters most to our organization. Rather than what happened last year was we were always reacting to that one-off question that you had. And so that would send us off to answer, you know, one of our community members' questions, and then it might, and sometimes it might be labor intensive, or it might require a lot of research to, depending how specific the question was. And that sucks up a lot of our time, as opposed to us saying, like, what is it that we want our community to know about our organization, and how are we going to share it in a more digestible form? Like, for example, enrollment. That question comes up all the time, right? And so it's not just as easy as saying enrollment's declining, because it's a, you have to do a whole analysis, right? And you have to look at it over time, both what happened in the past and also what's projected to happen in the future. So for me, I think about, how do I boil that down into a visual and like two or three sentences that tells that story about enrollment, so that folks feel equipped with accurate information? Because yes, our enrollment is declining, but what you also have to notice is that our K2 enrollment is going to be increasing next year by as many as, projected to be as 10 to 15 students at each of our K2s. That has a major impact, right? But our Wentworth enrollment and our middle school enrollment is projected to decline, while our high school enrollment is going to be slightly increased based on our projections. So it's not just as easy as looking at the bottom line and saying that overall number of students is less, because that shifts the needs of our organization. So that's a long-winded explanation, and-
But I think the story isn't, isn't, well, our population's going to be increasing at the primary schools and decreasing. I don't think that's the story. I think the story is, this year, we felt the change in student population in that we had shifted teachers, or had, I can't, I don't remember the whole story, but you know the story, about, we have one less kindergarten teacher, whatever it was, and then we had to shift them to a first grade because the enrollment was so high, and blah, blah, like, that's the story about now we had these classes that had 21, that isn't comfortable for parents, and we don't feel comfortable with that whole shift.
Yeah, the blue point.
Tell the blue point story. The blue point story. So it has to be like an, not an emotional story where people are, you know, holding pictures of crying, but like, a story that people can remember, because that's, the point is you want people to remember, like I am, part of it, I remember Julie saying something about, like, kindergarten and the first grade teachers, this right before school, and that's really hard for new parents and new students.
So the question is, do you tell last year's story, or do we tell this year's story? Of what we're seeing in the projections?
I don't think you might not know what this year's story is yet.
But we have to make budget decisions now, based on those projections, to what this year's story is going to be.
Right, so you're making decisions based on the evidence that we have going forward for this next year. But for example, we did the same thing last year, and what we found out in August, two weeks before school started, was the story.
And I think that blue point story tells, that tells them what you're trying to say about the shifting, you know, okay, well, our total population is down, but look what happened at the K2 level, you know, because there, I think that explains it.
And when we cut so close, it's a huge impact that doesn't give us the flexibility to shift. We had to really make some changes that kids, that kids felt, parents felt, and it was really hard that first week of school. I mean, that's just one example, but that's the enrollment story that-
As opposed to the data.
As opposed to the data.
The charts and the graphs that are-
Or you saying, "Well, when you look at the total enrollment, you know, the high school might be going down, but the K2s are going up." Like, that, you know, that story tells them that, but it also is like, well, yeah, like, this is actually what will happen.
Right, and we could have avoided all, like, that problem with those kids who thought they had one teacher, and, you know, anyway.
Right.
I think it's-
I'm really glad that we're having even a little bit of this conversation right now, because Liris is going to be coming to our communications meeting on Monday to talk about her four-pager that she wants to learn on.
Right, right.
So, like, enrollment, there's bullet points like that, like, really commonly asked and important topics that we feel like need to be highlighted. We can talk about how they're highlighted in the meeting, but if we wanted to just get, bring some new bullet points, that would be helpful.
Yeah, so what else? Administrative costs, seems like that's something I want to hear people complain, even though that's not a, I mean, we do a great job in this town, but I think that is something that people don't understand. And so I think it's an easy thing to say, oh, administrative costs.
Right.
But even though they're not, I know, I've seen all the charts, but, you know, I've seen all the charts, and I know they're not. But that's, I think that's an easy thing for people to say that, not knowing.
Yep, that's a good one. Jack, did you have one?
Two things. One has to do with this setup here. Symbolically, half the people have their backs to any audience who might be here.
Right, I agree.
So I just think, I was surprised to see it.
It just flipped the other way. I think it's set up like this because it was like-
I think it's set up like this because it was last night, this way for the council. So they probably just didn't break it down. But you're right, if you flipped it, you would have it more open.
That's number one. Number two, I think that we should put up a survey asking parents whose children are not in our schools, where they are and why.
Oh, you mean in private schools, or do you mean?
Yes. And here's my reasoning. I think it's important for us to know. Parents will send their children to parochial schools because they went or they believe in the parochial education. It, it's a, has nothing to do with Scarborough School System. It's a philosophy. Some people will send their children to the virtual school because they think that their child can, for whatever reason, doesn't, they can get a better education, it's more comfortable for them. We may not agree with them, we think that the children need to socialize more. But I think we need to get a handle on where they are and why they're there, and what grade level. And I think it'd be easy to do.
Sometimes we know where they are and sometimes we don't. But I think the other thing to remember is that there is a law in Maine where you have school choice. And so some, some people are, will request a superintendent's agreement so that their child can go to another district for a variety of reasons. And there's a process for reviewing that, but you're right.
Absolute.
You have a lot of choices. You can choose to, you can choose to virtual school, you can choose to send to a private school, so.
But here's what the point that I think we need to make. Parents need to make what they feel is the best decision for the education of their child. It's a parent's decision. If the parents don't think that they have a say in what we're doing, I don't want them telling us how to do it. I want them to work with us on educating their children.
But I think what, what I, I am understanding from this conversation is that we're trying to find out as the budget comes up, what are the roadblocks that we keep hearing year in and year out?
But we need to know why. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Why they're choosing other schools?
Pardon me?
We need to know why they're choosing other schools?
Yes. I truly believe that that's only going to help us.
Do you think there's a large population that don't go to public schools?
Well, I don't know. But here's what I think. Building in Scarborough has not ceased. You look around at the new neighborhoods coming up every year. Those children haven't hit our schools. I'm not saying the ones in the new buildings, I'm saying that I think we should have, if, if we had every child who lives in town going to our school, we'd be overwhelmed. So don't get me wrong, I think private education helps us out. But I also think that, that when people talk about declining enrollments, we need to have an answer for that beyond, beyond the fact that it, it doesn't affect the budget because it's two students at second grade, it's three students in fifth grade, whatever it happens to be.
Well, I think part of it.
But the gross number, if we knew the gross number, it might help.
Well, and I think one of the things we have to think about is, you know, who has access to housing in our community? And then what happens once their children graduate? They might be choosing to downsize into one of our growing 55-plus communities. So then that housing becomes available for others to move into. But who can access housing in Scarborough? That's a big factor on our enrollment. There's not a lot of really affordable starter homes for young families. But the fact that our enrollment is showing that as our, as our students are graduating, we're going to have this influx of younger students. Obviously, then they're going to grow up through our system. And so it's kind of like this right now is what our enrollment looks like at each phase level. So is it just a cycle, or is this part of a cycle? Or is the enrollment going to increase and be here to stay as more and more housing is available? Those are all things that we're, we're looking at. And, but the bottom line is, we can't discount what enrollment looks like at our K2s because we have space issues with them, right? Even though we will have space available in some of the other schools. So that's a part of it too, but I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying, and I'm curious too, if we can get the exact, or close to an estimate of numbers of how many students are choosing other schools.
I mean, for years, you know, I've had parents say to me, Jackie, I'm sending my son to Shepherds, or I'm sending my daughter to Macaulay, or I'm sending the children to Waynefleet, or whatever it happens to be. And just because they believe in it. I've, I've only had one parent in all the years I've been on the board, somebody I've known very well. He and his wife knocked on my door, quite frankly. They're like, we're sending our son to the Christian school. And we wanted you to know, because he can talk his way out of anything. And, and he has those teachers wrapped right around his finger, and he isn't doing his homework, and we're going to make sure that it gets done. Daughters went to school here and graduated. I mean, it, it was the individual child.
Yep.
And, but I've never had somebody say to me, I'm taking my kid out because it's a bad school district. Never.
So one of the other things I think that came up last year a lot, and I'm just looking back at one of the things that we wrote, was the cost per pupil and sort of what that encompasses. It's not just looking at our neighbors and how do we compare to our neighbors, but what do, what services do we provide for our students at that price? I think the, the town is doing the same sort of thing on, you know, here's what you pay for taxes, what services do you get for that? Here's how much it costs for us to have a student, and here are all of the things that we excel at and why we're the, one of the top 10 school districts in the state.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree. I think to share those successes, I think is so important.
Student outcome. Connect to the student population.
But I think the budget time is when a lot of people kind of listen to what's going on with the school board, you know, and with the schools, where the other times of the year, they might not be paying attention. So the budget time is when a lot of people are paying attention, and that's the time to really share those successes.
Yes, I agree that what our ranking is, bank on that, and how we got there, what are the things that make that up so that people understand what that ranking means? And I really highlight the successes of the school system.
So what do we think? The, the Mepre study that we had done a couple of years ago was exactly that, that it was very jargony, very scholarly, and not very easy to absorb for your average person who just wants to pick up that one pager or four pager. So, but I, I think, you know, all the data was there that said, you know, here's what's going on in these other communities, here's what they're spending, and here's what their student outcomes are looking like. It was a powerful argument, but it wasn't boiled down to the point where people could access it easily.
So when we say ranking, I know that, I think the Portland Press Herald does some sort of ranking. What, what ranking source do we rely on?
But there's another one that comes out that people use all the time online.
Yeah, that NICH.
But that's, but that's not.
There wasn't one, there wasn't one on the Portland Press Herald where, but it was odd, like there was, I remember seeing a listing, and we ranked very high, but it was weird Cape Elizabeth wasn't on the list. Like there were certain schools that weren't on the list, but it just came out, like just last, like sometime last year. But I forget what that list was, but I know we did very well.
And I think it was because of standardized testing. Didn't we decide that maybe they've been in a yard.
Okay. Cause there was a couple of schools that weren't on the list.
It was because they didn't.
Right, yeah.
Do we do like graduation rates? Or do we have any data on how many can stay in school, like two years, three years, four years past graduation at Scarborough High School?
We, we are just trying to create some systems and structures to better, to stay better connected to our alumni. We just had our first alumni breakfast event last Friday. But that is definitely an area that we can improve on. And that's, you know, so part of it too can be what are the data points that we want to get better at collecting and communicating? So we know our graduation rates. We know the percentage of students that commit to going on to a two-year or a four-year college, or military, or workforce. That's data that we have readily available, so we can get that. We can communicate that, I would say.
I just think colleges, Clay, I went back for, to my school, to my college in the fall, and they just do such an amazing job of sharing the success and making you feel so good about being a part of that school. You know what I mean? And so I think that anytime we can, we can share that.
Most of the time, those successful storytelling moments are individualized, that they're not talking generalized. It's very much Suzie did this, or Johnny did that.
Yeah.
And I think the more that we can include real-life examples, the more it's going to resonate with people. Because if we just talk, oh, hey, X percent, it gets lost.
So Dylan and Thomas, do you have connections with any Scarborough grads that are doing successful things post-high school that you could reach out to and say like, hey, can you write a paragraph, just kind of where you are and how's it going?
I know, I'm not sure how successful they are, but.
I know, I can get him to do it.
Yeah, I think if we could get just a paragraph, you know, it doesn't have to be a big thing, but just like, here's, you know, so-and-so graduated in 2016, do an X, Y, and Z, kind of a thing.
Did Jeff meet with you?
Jeff Coolen?
He came in town, maybe it was when George was here, then he, he works for the Educational Arts Council or something out of Washington DC. So I, I know him well, so I'll get in touch with him.
We could have, I think, more, more information of people who are a little bit older, who have graduated from college and are successful and now returns and live in Scarborough. So that if we put out some kind of a, maybe even an ad in, in the leader that said, you know, you're a SHS graduate and you reside in Scarborough, we'd like to hear from you. Are you one of the school people? Couple of, no, just a couple of questions.
Where are you now?
Yeah, where are you now? I mean, you, obviously, they'd have to be residing here, but tell us about your field of employment, what brought you back to Scarborough? You know, maybe a statement about how your high school education played into your college.
How about Kelly Mullin Martin?
I think there's a whole bunch of them. I think there's a lot of them.
Yes, is now first of all.
So many, yeah.
I just gave David Lomax's name. He's a graduate of Scarborough High School, and he's the one who won $50,000 on Shark Tank and started the food truck for a lot of year out of California.
And now he's here in town running.
Exactly, it's 14 franchises in the country. And when he was successful with the $50,000, Barbara Corcoran gave him another $100,000 to help his business. And he's been very successful.
Is that Sabine?
So if each person at this table had, even if we just had one story, each of us had one story from someone we know, whether it's a recent grad, because I think it's important to hear from them, how prepared were they? Did they feel ready, you know, cause that's. And then how are they sharing in this thing called life? I think that would be awesome to infuse in our budget, in our budget book. You know, in our presentation of the budget, or on our one pager, or, and/or all of these things, also on our website.
The names. The year they graduate from high school. No, graduate, I mean, postgraduate degree.
I think something that we can do immediately, quite frankly, is to put Mr. Vash on out in front for us, because he has written the one-act play that's going to be performed by our students. So he can blush all he wants, but that's, that's a tremendous accomplishment for a young person.
You're right, current students too. Yeah.
I think this is kind of off-topic, but ties in a little bit. I went to a Bruins game over winter break, and they have this highlight video at the beginning, like gets everyone pumped up. The lights are down, the spotlights are going, and you start to feel it. Like I don't know any of these players, I'm just there because it's like, hey, we're in Boston, it's fun, great. But you start to feel really excited about it, and you're like, yeah, and the music's pumping. And then they have the players start to like talk and just say something about either.
On the video.
On the video, about Boston, or the fans, or whatever. It's just like a highlight thing. And I kept thinking to myself, this would be so cool if we had like, I don't want to throw kids' names because I don't, if we had like Thomas talking undertone, and then there's the music playing and the Red Storm logo comes out, and then there's the football game, and then there's a video of the play. Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, yeah.
Just to get people like excited, and you feel pride, and you're like, yeah, this is my team. I don't even know any of these people on this team. But like I was in it.
And when would this be used?
And it could be on our website, it could be on Channel 3, it could be blasted on Facebook.
Screen while we're ready for the meeting to begin.
Different things that kids are doing, walking through the halls, and high fiving, um. Marco Manfred's talking about, whatever he's talking about. Like just all these things that get people saying like, yeah, that's my town.
We've got so many people right now, you know, OG winning, just Patrick for the first time to Scarborough. That is stuff that, we need to be promoting that. People need to see what the kids are doing, the wicked cool fish tank.
The aquaponics.
Yeah, that's, those sorts of things.
Blood drive.
The blood drive.
He's a P.
The more things that are out there, real world, real day, is going to get people engaged and understand that the money is being spent wisely and it's really enriching the student life.
Something we should all be proud of.
Exactly.
The community, yeah.
And if you have that, seriously, prior to a meeting, not only a school board meeting, but you're going to have a public hearing on the budget, and people come in and they see them on, I'm serious. I am not spitting into the wind on this one.
No, I think it's, and it reminds me of, you know, when you go to like the soccer banquet or the, you know.
Right.
The highlight reel, and it's, I always get almost teared up when I see a highlight reel, even though I only know like, which is my kid's team. It's just, to me, it's just such a huge community moment, and you're surrounded by everyone that cares about these kids. And I just, I think it's so powerful.
So I think we need a PR person.
We have, we're going to need a series because we have so much content. I mean, that is how awesome our community is.
Well, and I think Steve Bailey said it, and it struck me when he was here, it was, it was the main thing that I took out of that boardmanship meeting was that it's a 12-month campaign for us. It's a 12-month cycle of, of helping the community see all of the incredible things that our students are doing and our staff are doing, and coordinating and events and all of these great things. It's a 12-month campaign instead of the negative three-month campaign or whatever. So it's, it's building, it's a process, and it's building that pride and that excitement over some really positive stories rather than just the facts, like.
Would there be any benefit of having some sort of, kind of like what you do with the Listen and Learn, but like with student and school leaders, just kind of talking with the public?
Yes.
So, I don't know, just having like coffee and just have the public come and talk with?
We've talked about that in our communications meetings a lot, and I feel like we've talked about it like for a couple of years. But like highlighting our students and the money you're spending on your taxes, this is, you know, this is your outcome. You should feel very proud, and here's what these five kids are going to go do after high school. I think there's a story to each student. It might not be everyone's going to college or going. It might not be everyone's going to college, or going into the workforce, but everyone has a story of where they came from and where they're going to go. And I just think community members need to hear that, because it's a lot of, it's that building and the main part of town, and there's so much more going on inside.
Could be cool for them to see it, though, too, if you had, like, an event where you displayed tons of, like, student, like, projects, not like an art show, but like, any success that we've had, or different projects, not necessarily at the high school, but at all phase levels.
Yeah.
Bring back the science fair or something like that, Clay, I know that used to be...
We have the science bowl, but I don't think it's the science fair.
Yeah, I don't know. But that would be, that would be true.
That comes back this way.
So you guys are doing exactly what I would hope you would do. I'm just noticing the time, and we also have a couple of executive sessions. So in this slide deck, when I share it with you, you're going to notice there's a blank slide here, so you can continue to add ideas. I'm going to chart the ideas that we have right in here, and then there will be extra slides where you can just plug in anything you're thinking about, and it doesn't have to just be today or tomorrow. This is an ongoing thing. We're trying to improve our communication. I've been hearing some really good feedback from people that our communication, they feel like our communication is better, is getting better, that we're communicating more, but it's one of those things that you can always improve. So we can use this as sort of a way to capture those ideas, and then just appreciate that I love the idea of, like, a Scarborough Pride video. Now I have to, like, actually have some time to develop that and make that happen.
If we develop videos, and I'm sure there have to be more than one, I think that every time there's an event in a building, to have that going, as people are coming in. I mean, we have these screens all over our schools now, people will look at them, people will watch them.
Can I put the link into that little document you're going to share? With the Bruins highlight film? Because I don't want it to get...
The only person who would go to a Bruins game and be like, "Oh, we should do it for the school."
I literally, I mean, on my phone, I was like, "Okay, this is what we're going to do." But it's just, it's not a lot of talking, it's just like an undertone of, you get the point.
We've been to games.
We have one to boot students, and we need to showcase that.
But could we, could we have students speak at some of the board meetings, that, when the budget...
Like Dylan was saying, I just think that's an awesome idea. All right, write that down on the thing, because it's true that, like, the three of us sit at our communications meeting and come up with all these things, but we also need to hear, like, I think it's really informative from Leigh Anne and Hillary to hear, you guys are the new ones, so it's nice to hear what your thoughts are with regards to communicating the budget, because you weren't on this side of it last year. And we sort of get consumed in the same old, same old.
So you know how at our business meetings, I usually do recognitions, and then we have student reports? I'm wondering if we could challenge our students here to possibly bring a student to showcase.
Interestingly enough, that was something that a student had asked me the other day, because there is, the environment of club wants to talk about some of the projects they're doing, and they were like, can we come in during, like, the student board recognition and ask and talk about it? So, I have an entire list of people who would like to come.
So we'll make a slide in here that's just, I'm going to call it Student Showcase, until somebody comes up with a different name, and then you can start to type in, sort of, whether it's a club or a group that you know, and then you can, we just have to schedule them well in advance so they know.
It didn't say a word this year.
Anybody else before we move on? It's quadrant nine, so maybe we should move.
Am I going to have to watch that, cause meeting?
No, she was just, I was calling trouble. I started hearing everything, and announcer was like, "Shooken!" Come on now! Look like you're the person to do it for.
It's a game show.
I'll get my 12-year-old, I think there's something on YouTube to do.
Wow. Okay, so we're just going to move on to 7.0, and I'm going to put these together, so I need a motion to go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA subsection 4056D for the purpose of discussing the Scarborough Drivers' Contract Not to Return to Public Sessions, and a motion to go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA subsection 4056D for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's contract not to return to public sessions.
So moved.
Very good. There, I don't see any questions about that. All in favor? 10, 7 plus 2. And I need a motion to adjourn at this time.
So moved.
All in favor?